And I just want to welcome you tonight to town hall on our budgeting process here for private and elementary schools. A little smaller crowd than we anticipated, but a little surprise, but you know, we can guess about why that might be. When perhaps the cold slippery night, they know it's being recorded and they can watch it later on in their own time. Who knows? But my only request is all those budgets. So take it home if you got the young ones or if you got a sweet tooth. My name is Mike, I'm the superintendent here and I know pretty much everyone. And I don't know, we met personally, but are your parents in our district?
Yes, I have a child that went over to Lago and we can see that.
Welcome, welcome. You know, because of our size, we'll just quickly go around and do some introductions. And then I'll kind of make some context and then I'll turn over the tang. So we'll lay down the line if you don't like it.
What's your name?
Stephanie Cuddy.
Yes, I'm in the community. I'm in William, I'm a new resident at the school where we're. And I'm a secretary, so I love the school where we're third. I'm Sharon Rucker.
I'm Bill Barker, her husband, and we're both taxpayers and we serve in an administrative school.
Evening, everyone. My name is Joel Dogg, I'm the director of community education services at Facebook.
Rashad Shuka, director of student support services for the district.
Hi, everyone. I'm our executive director of administrative services, Emily Herman.
I'm our assistant director of operations and administration.
Good evening, Marcus Malazo, director of technology.
Hello, Dana Evans, director of teaching planning.
This is Zimmerman, communication specialist.
And I'll introduce, well, Tammy Frederickson.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tammy Frederickson, I'm the executive director of business services in the district since July 1st.
Great, great. So welcome all, and obviously a lot of staff here tonight. Those folks are meeting the senior leadership team in the district, so they work with a lot of teams, all four of the districts on all aspects of what we do here. So we wanted to have this evening for us to have a kind of budget one-on-one for our community. One of the things coming in as a new superintendent, understanding is that there's a strong need and a strong desire for our community to have greater fiscal transparency. And wanting to have kind of that level of foundation where folks have a common understanding of what goes into building a budget here in our district. In addition to that, you know, it's an opportunity for us to engage with the community over some of the next month or so. To gauge the priorities, kind of what's top of mind, what's important. Whether you have kids in the district, whether you're taxpayers in the district, these are our schools. And we know very much that strong schools equal strong communities. And we need to be strong stewards of those resources that we have coming into the district to maximize the return for our kids. And so tonight, we're going to walk through our presentation that helps our community understand how we make our budget here at private and elementary schools. And there's a lot of factors that go into this. Obviously, we are hearing about the governor's budget that just got released. We know that that is going to work its way through the political hurdles. And what we see today is not where it's going to end. We'll be closely monitoring a lot of that as that kind of gets, you know, chipped away and goes down various channels. And in the very near future here, we'll have some good idea as to what our projections could look like. Based upon some of the factors that Tammy talked about tonight with enrollment, based upon what we hear and kind of see solidifying at the state level in terms of the funding. Because right now, a lot of things are up in the air. And we want to make sure that some of that does start to settle before we start coming to the community. With some real kind of hard numbers, although we know that they'll adjust over time. We want to have some pretty good accurate sense of what those numbers look like and we'll start engaging in deeper conversations around our final budget. And Tammy talked a lot about that this evening as well. So again, tonight, if you have thoughts, questions, comments, perspectives, things that you've seen, what are some values that you might have about our schools? Those of you who have kids or don't have kids, what have you seen in our schools, what would you like to see in our schools? We can have some of that conversation too. It's going to be a little bit of a different dynamic with only just a handful of us here, but we'll still have that conversation. Because this again will be televised on our YouTube channel or our Facebook channel, district website, wherever it will be posted, so people can play it back. We've also been looking at building on FAQ, frequently asked questions. So that when we have, is how folks can provide their perspectives into a common email address. And then we'll do our best as staff, based upon questions at the end, to provide those answers and just kind of have that running record. So we can kind of have this virtual conversation of so folks can see what kind of questions are being asked and hey, I had that question too. And oh, here's my answer. So that's another way that we can be more transparent, again, with some folks here and some folks that are not. So again, thank you for coming out tonight, and I will turn over to Tammy.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Welcome, everyone. It's a snowy evening, but we get to come out. We're going to be talking about the budget process that the district's going to be able to improve the next month or so. We want to give you some background information on how we build budgets and how we get some of the funding that we receive in our district. We're going to be talking about enrollment, process trends, some of the data that we look at. And then talk about the specific budget planning, talk about our timeline, some of our processes, what our revenues and expenditures are projected to be as we move forward. So enrollment projections are really important because that's kind of the first step in building a budget. Most of the district's revenue is based on our enrollment data. About seventy-five point seven percent of district revenue is based on the enrollment that we have at the previous year. We get about eighty-four point five million in revenue. And we want to build budget allocations that are going to reflect that revenue projection. We don't want to give out more money than we anticipate having. And we also don't want to give out less money because this money is here for the kids that are in the district. And we need to make sure that we're maximizing the dollars that we're sending out. And there's a risk if we're wrong of having to touch our fund balance. So fund balance is kind of your end-of-year savings account, if you will. The way school funding works is if you have more revenue than expenses at the end of the year, the difference goes into fund balance. If you spend more than you have in revenue, then you have to take money out of fund balance. So we want to make sure that we're giving a conservative estimate of what our revenues are going to look like. So that we don't have to take a large amount of money out of our fund balance. Some of the trends that we look at as we analyze our enrollment is the birth rates. So when you look at birth rates, you are assuming that in five years, those kids that are born in the share are going to be kindergarteners. So it's important to look at those birth rate trends to build your five-year projection. What are we going to need as we move forward if our birth rate declines or increases? It's going to affect how we plan our budget in the future. And then you look at housing loan capacity. Are there opportunities to build more single-family homes to attract more families into the district? That's one way that we can get additional revenue for more kids. Unemployment rates, economy and interest rates, they're going to affect families' decisions on what their choices are for education. If the unemployment rates are high in a community, they may have other options, they may make other choices. So you just want to pay attention to all of those different trends. And then of course, the school program offers. If we're not offering a quality educational program that our community wants, then they're going to seek other choices for their students. The enrollment process kind of is a full-year kind of process as we move forward. Right now, we're looking at the online enrollment process, looking at kindergarten enrollment. As we get those kindergarten numbers, we can refine our enrollment projections and look at attracting our families. We also have a lottery process that usually happens at the end of February. So if there's specifically at Lago Del Lago, there are additional students that are interested in attending that school. And we may not have space for them or we can do kind of a lottery process. And then we have school tours and. It's important because that's the official enrollment account that goes into the Minnesota Department of Education. So as of October 1st, they just take a snapshot and assume that that's your enrollment projections as we do revenue projections for some of the formulas. So if you look at some of the trends in the county, and I just chose Scott County for demonstration purposes. You could look at cities or you could look at other counties. But the trends are basically what we're interested in, and the trends in the surrounding counties and cities have been pretty consistent to what this shows. So the population is showing slight increases. If you look at the school district enrollment, we're showing slight declines. So as your population increases, getting to talk about the birth rates, there are fewer students coming into private and elementary schools. If you look at some of these birth rates, this will reflect the trend that we're seeing. There's been a decline in birth rates, not just in Scott County, but all the way across the country. We're just seeing, reducing in birth rates, which again affects those kindergarten accounts in five years. You look at kindergarten by district, what I'm trying to demonstrate here is while we have kindergarten enrollment, we look at the ratios of kindergartners to the birth rates. So you can see is that birth rate is declining, we have fewer kindergarten kids. But the percent of students that are coming into the district as kindergartners is declining along with those birth rates. So our projected five-year kindergarten enrollment is going to show decline as we move forward. Our enrollment history, we've been pretty consistent from 2008 to about 2015. Then we had a slight increase in our enrollment, kind of leveled off, and now we're seeing some slight declines. We might think, well, is there a trend to that, are there certain grade levels or are there certain demographics that are declining faster than others? There's really not. It's kind of consistent all the way across grade levels. It kind of has gone up, rolled off, gone down, and then you're seeing a couple of the grade levels are increasing. But for the most part, they're just kind of slightly declining, they're leveling off. So as we do planning, we say, well, how close did we get in our estimate? So if we look at the, this time last year, a year ago, when we were doing budget planning, we anticipated, for instance, in K-5, we estimated that we were going to have three thousand seven hundred and twenty-one students. So we built the budget based on that, we built our revenue projections based on that. And then October 1st, when we had the official child count, what did it look like? We had three thousand six hundred and seventy-one, which means that we had actual anticipated percentage of about ninety-eight point seven. So we were close. If you look at middle school and high school, there's a bigger variance. We only got ninety-six and point five percent of the students that we anticipated coming into middle school and high school. So as we look at the enrollment, what things are going to impact the numbers that we have? Obviously, families moving into or out of the district, that's going to affect your enrollment, availability of new housing. Families don't have a place to move to, and there's other options. Families are always looking at safety and climate in their schools and neighborhood. They don't feel safe, again, there's other options for them. Some of those options that they have under school choices, they can be in charter schools, you can go to non-public schools. Some families just want a faith-based education, so they're going to choose a non-public school over public school. Minnesota is an open enrollment state. There's a state statute that says families are allowed to submit an application to a non-resident district for their student to attend. So if we look at kind of the demographics in private and elementary schools, you can see over the last few years, we are going to be more diverse. We're at about twenty-five percent of our students are now students of color. And we need to keep that in mind as we're building programs for the future, which have an impact on our budget. If we look at special education and English learners, it's pretty steady. There's not a huge increase, there's not a huge decline. So we're staying pretty steady on how many students we have in special ed and English language students. Free reduced lunch meals, this is an important number to look at because there are some funding revenue streams tied to free and reduced lunch. Like compensatory education and Title I. So you can see our free and reduced lunch counts are declining slightly, which means those funding revenues that are attached to the free and reduced lunch are going to be declining. So we have to consider that as we do budget planning moving forward. So what do we have to think about as we're building a budget? In our community, we're having a growth in newly arrived immigrants. We're seeing some Ukrainian families coming into the district. And the county growth rates right now probably don't reflect those growth. They're usually a year or two behind. So as we're planning the budget, we need to consider what is our families looking like next year and moving forward. Will the economy continue to trend downward? We've all seen 108 in the supermarket, there's supply chain issues. Are we going to continue to have a recession? That's going to affect how much it's going to cost on contracts or supplies. You have to consider that as you're building the budget. And then opening and closing charter schools. Obviously, if you open a charter school, there is a good chance that our district will lose some students to that charter school. And on the other hand, if you have a charter school that closes, we could probably anticipate getting some of those students into our district. The list up here that I have are just the charter schools that are in this immediate kind of community area. Aspen is here, and I relate to Spire is in Chalk, I think Eightways in Williamsville, I think it's in Lakeville. So they're all the charter schools that are in our immediate area. So if we look at, what is our enrollment going to look like? As we do projections, we have some number that we can assume that we're going to use for our revenue. So this chart shows a three-year weighted projection. And what that means is that you look at the previous three years and you weigh them, with a little more weight on that year three. And then you assume that the trend that you saw in those three years is going to continue forward. So you can build your enrollment projections based on the past, making the assumptions that the trend is going to continue. Now, one of the challenges this year is that one of those years in that three-year average is the whole years. And that could potentially skew all of the numbers, depending on if we were accurate in assuming that that's part of the three-year average. So we have to continue to monitor. We need the starting point, we're going to use a three-year weighted average, and then just continue to look at it. We'll continue to monitor our enrollment, online enrollments, what the actual students are going to look like in September comes. And then just make the adjustments as we move forward. There are other ways that you can do an average, you can use a five-year weighted, you can use a three-year straight average. There's a lot of different ways that can be used. We've actually had this conversation at our finance advisory committee. And the consensus was three-year weighted average is probably a good way to calculate it for now. Again, we'll just keep monitoring it as we go forward. So our enrollment projections moving forward for '24 through fiscal year '28 are going to show a decline. That's what the three-year trend looked like. It's not going to be huge, but it's going to be a decline nonetheless. So as we build our revenue projections and plan for academic planning and some of those other things as we build the budget, we have to keep in mind that over the next five years, we're probably going to see some decline in enrollment, which means less revenue. So we don't want to all of a sudden say, oh, we're going to build a new school, when we don't have the enrollment projections to support that. So you need to think five years ahead of what do we need with the enrollment that we anticipate having. And how do we get revenue? Our biggest pot of money, if you will, is the state of Minnesota. You get a general aid formula that amount currently is six thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars per student. And that's what we hear the governor's plan talking about the formula allowance, that's what this is. He is proposing a four percent increase for next year, and then a two percent the year after, and then wants to tie it to inflation for the following year. This year, it was two percent increase. So we don't really know what it is. I think conservatively, we can assume a two percent and hope for a four. But we'll have to kind of wait and see how all of this plays out with the legislature. We also get categorical funding, which is based on student characteristics, like English learners. There is a revenue stream for English learners for free reduced lunch, that's tied to compensatory and Title money. And we also get partial reimbursement for services like special education. You'll hear about the special ed cross subsidy, which is the amount of money that the district has to take out of their general fund to provide the services that are on the students' individual education plans. The federal government, despite their good intention, at the establishment of Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, has never fully funded their mandate. So districts have to make sure that we provide all the services that those students need, and that's the special ed cross subsidy. We also have local salaries coming into the district. That's in the form of property taxes, which you all see, and voter approved reform of them. The federal government also gives us dollars, most of those money will flow through the state. The state gets the, for instance, Title money, and it'll distribute it to the different districts. The largest funds that we get from the federal government are the Every Student Succeeds Act, between all this Title I, and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And then we also get money from USDA to pay for our aid services. The biggest percentage of our dollars come from the general education dollars. The state, that's over sixty percent of the dollars come from that. And then property tax. Then we get a big chunk from special education and other state dollars, like some of the categorical funds that we get, federal dollars. And then other dollars, for instance, interest earnings or some of the state grants that we get, those also come into the district. The general fund formula allowance is set in statute. The legislature has to vote on it, you want the site, it's the statute 126C dot ten. And this legislature is debating what that's going to look like for next year. Currently, it's six thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. One thing, to put it kind of in perspective, a four percent increase to that number is about a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. It would be about seventy-one hundred or seven one hundred and thirty-seven. Two percent would be about seven thousand. So it's not a huge amount, but it makes a huge difference to the districts when that number is not increased. And then the general fund, as you said, provides the largest percentage of the dollars that we get. And most of it's not designated for a specific purpose. So it pays for things like classroom teachers, school staff, utilities, curriculum, administrative operational departments. It can pay for the general running of the district. Some of the other general fund revenue is compensatory revenue. And this is tied to the free and reduced lunch costs. So the dollars are to remain with the schools that generated the dollars. They have to be used for educational needs for students who are not achieving at their peer level. The EL dollars is based on the number of English language learners that we have in the district. The districts only receive funding for seven years of service. Regardless of how long you can actually keep service for the students, or English language students, the state will only pay us for seven years of their service. And then they assume that they have become proficient in their language. And everybody knows that doesn't always happen, and it probably doesn't happen. So after those seven years, then the districts need to continue to find revenue to pay for those services. And you'll hear about an English language cross subsidy. The current payment is seven hundred and four dollars per student, and you have to use those dollars to support English language students. The operating capital, the formula is based on the per pupil units, and then they weight. They have a weighting factor for the age of the audience. So it's this real kind of complicated formula, but it's basically two hundred and nineteen dollars per pupil times this formula. And you have to use that for either repair facilities, equipment purchases, or purchase of books. And that's it. There are no other allowable expenses with those dollars. We get referendum dollars. Referendum dollars were kind of designed so that districts could have an increase in their revenue stream, but it requires the approval of the voters. So there's a state law that limits the amount that you can have. And they also have a, if you choose to include in your referendum vote an inflationary factor, there is an inflation factor that's built into that. Currently, the cap is one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, and that includes the inflation factor for this year. We're currently at six hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil, and we do not have an inflation factor built into our referendum. Those dollars can be used for anything that's allowable under the general fund dollars. So you have some flexibility, quite a bit of flexibility in how those referendum dollars can be spent.
Can I just ask you a question? And you may not be able to answer this, because you were here in New Orleans in 2017. You know, we had an operating referendum pass, and increased the per pupil, I mean, turn it down. It was like, oh, we're nine hundred dollars, and now it's like three hundred dollars. So after that three hundred dollars had the voters approved, it is no longer in the number.
So the legislature changed that three hundred dollars, it no longer needs a vote from the, or approval from the voters. They just made that, they're trying to equalize across the state, how the referendum dollars could be used. They just said every district, every district across the state of Minnesota can levy for three hundred dollars without having an approval. It's not voter approved, it's just a three hundred dollar.
Even though we did approve it, it's now just in a different bucket?
Correct.
Okay, so you're going to explain that I may read it to, is everyone's the same way then? Or all those other districts you're going to show have the three hundred dollars being held, or is it?
Yes. So this shows our surrounding districts. And the ones on this end, you'll see that they're over the two thousand dollars. They have a weight, inflation built into theirs. So that eighteen eighty-two, they have built inflation into it. So as you go forward, once you vote on it, then that inflation factor kicks in. It's not necessarily limited to that eighteen eighty-two, because it's a new base now. So if you already voted for it three years ago, then your inflation factor continues to go up. Which is why those are only eighteen hundred dollars.
Can I ask you another question, just so folks know? Does it prevent that our community has less business, so we have less, we can't pass along taxes? The residents, they're most of the burden of the taxes, as opposed to having a big commercial base where you can.
Yeah, so the formula for referendum basically has your adjusted net tax capacity as one of the factors in when we calculate it. And because we don't have a lot of industry, obviously, our adjusted net tax capacity is not as high. There's no industry to include in that number, so that does affect us.
I mean, do you think a look at that chart right there, are they pretty much similar in terms of like, that practice and all that?
Some of the categorical aid that we get, special education revenue. And it's not fully funding special education, even though the federal government. fully funding special education, even though the federal government mandates us to provide services for all the students on individual education plans. So we get a partial reimbursement of the cost that it takes to educate those students, and some of those disabilities include autism, developmental delays, which a lot of people know as early childhood, special education, visual, hearing impaired, the development of cognitive delays, physical impairments, emotional behavior disorder, and just those kids with learning disabilities. We also have achievement and integration revenue, which is another categorical aid. The state kind of created those dollars in order to ethically educate all students, regardless of the disparities in their diverse racial, ethnic, or background backgrounds. So you have to have approved three-year plan, we're actually working on our three-year plan coming up. We get three hundred and fifty dollars times the number of protected class students in the district. And a protected class, it's a group of students that have a common characteristic that are legally protected from discrimination and harassment based on those characteristics. There's alternative teacher compensation revenue, that's better known as QCOM. It's a state-funded program that essentially used to fund effectiveness of teachers. It's currently two hundred and sixty dollars per student, and you might want to note that districts only were approved for QCOM if the teachers voted to have it in the district. So there are some districts that don't get QCOM because the teachers just voted no on. You can only use the dollars for teacher training and stipends. And long-term facilities maintenance, that's a categorical revenue stream that we get, that the formulas are based on your pupil units, and then there's a ratio of your building age, and then courses, the approved plan that you have. You have to have a ten-year facilities plan approved by the Department of Education. If it's, there is a project that's not on the plan, then the state's not going to approve the funding for it. You can only use it for building maintenance, and then M D E approves either a health and safety capital project, or increased building assessment. It can't be used for new construction or anything, it's got to be maintenance. We look at the general fund formula, it has never kept up with inflation. You can see this year, the twenty twenty-three year, there's a huge disparity. It kind of had the same trend line going forward until this past year, and then inflation shot up, and we didn't have formula allowance that could even get close to that. So when the governor talks about in two years, he would like to tie that formula to inflation, we're still going to have a gap, because there's a huge gap now, and if you increase our funding by four percent next year, and the inflation continues at that rate, you still have a big gap. And then the following year, you get two percent on the formula allowance, and the inflation goes at that same rate, it's an even bigger gap. So on that third year, when it's tied to inflation, there's still going to be a big gap, because it'll help, because it's not going to be continuing to grow, but there's still going to be that same gap. If we had gotten the formula allowance keeping up with inflation, this district could have seen an over nine million dollars more than we currently have.
I have a question. That's just the general education requirement of the revenue stream that we get, is all the revenue streams that have bridged that gap? Because otherwise, you want a busy bankruptcy, you're considering that twenty-three years worth of gaps, I mean, where's the money coming from? If you're receiving less than what?
Yes, there are, and a lot of it is categorical, so, again, categorical money is going to tie your hands, because you can only use it for the things that it was intended. So as special ed costs go up, you're going to have a larger cost subsidy, so you're going to continue to struggle, especially in declining enrollment, you're going to continue to struggle with how you're going to kind of make ends meet. As we build the budget, we know, we now know what our revenue looks like, so what are we going to allocate those resources for? The biggest percentage of what we spend money on in any district is staff, salaries and benefits. We're a very labor-intensive organization, we have all kinds of staff in our buildings, from principals, teachers, custodians, secretaries, we have to pay food service workers, we've got an altitude of staff that it takes to run this district. And then we have purchase services, and purchase services include things like transportation, we have to get the kids to the schools, so we have transportation costs for our buses, we have to pay utilities on all of our buildings, so we have those, and as the utilities increase, everybody's seen where utility bills go up, same with us, we're going to see increases in our utility bills. The supplies and materials, it's going to cost us more right now to buy things, just with the, like, the cost of materials and then the supply chain challenges that we're going to be seeing. Given all that, you look at Fire Lake Savage, we have an educational cost of about two thousand dollars less than the average school district in the southern metro area. That means that we're getting approximately seventeen million dollars less annually than some of the surrounding districts that we, are next to. And yet, given all that, we still are doing very best we can to provide innovative programs and personalized funding for our students. And that's what we're here for, is to make sure that our kids are getting the best education that we can possibly give them. So as we build the budget, it's, budget planning is kind of a twelve-month process, you're busy from July first or June thirtieth. Right now, we're at a stage where we're setting priorities and, and getting our planning process. And then moving forward, we'll finalize what some of our assumptions are, we'll engage with our community to see what priorities we need to consider as we build those budgets, and then we'll get the school department allocations done, and then in this whole process, we'll continue to have conversations with our school board and our community about where our priorities are, or what things we're going to have to consider as we move forward. And then all of that needs to come to a June board meeting, where the board needs to vote on the budget. We have to have an approved budget by state law by June thirtieth, but we do not get any revenue starting July first, so it's very important that we continue to have conversations so everybody's very comfortable with what we included in our budget. We're going to build the budget based on our district's teaching plan, I think everybody's seen this, it's all over our website, we're not going to do something. And some of the revenue assumptions that we have moving forward is that we're going to get at least two percent on the general education formula, it would be great if we got four percent, but we're going to build the budget assuming that we're going to get at least two percent. We know that all of the formula, revenue streams are going to be reduced because we have less enrollment, so as that enrollment goes down, those formulas kick in, and we're going to get some less dollars based on that. Our referendum does not have an inflationary factor, so we know that's, that's just a reality, so we're not going to get additional dollars from that funding source. And when the government, a couple years ago, federal government, distributed all of the COVID dollars, which was billions of dollars for all of the school districts, they put a deadline, when those ones have to be spent, and most of the deadlines are September of two thousand twenty-four. So we do have some money still left from our COVID allocations, so we're making sure that we're spending those dollars for the purposes of being contained.
How much is left back at the end of this quarter? So we need to make sure how much is left.
We'll have to see how much we get spent, but we'll report that out.
Is there, is there anything we're covering today, you know, specifically with those COVID dollars that have fixed, where once those COVID dollars go away, we have nothing to pump into?
Yeah, there probably is.
You know how much that is?
I, off the top of my head, I can't give that information off. Then all of our revenue, we're going to spend it for the intended purposes, and we're not going to use categorical dollars for something other than what those categorical dollars were intended for. So then we have to think, what are our expenditure assumptions? We're going to allocate resources to schools based on students' needs. We're going to make sure that those allocations are equitable, which may or may not be equal, but we're going to look at the needs of students in each of our buildings, and make sure that we allocate resources to support those students. Departments are in the process now, senior leaders, we're allocating on our department anticipated needs, and putting together a budget request, and we're going to look at those and prioritize them, and determine how we're going to allocate those resources. We are committed to making sure that all of our employment contract, bargaining unit contracts are honored, so they have an increase in their contract, we're going to make sure that that contract is honored. And at the end of the year, board policy says that our assigned and unassigned fund balances need to be at least eight percent, so we're committed to making sure that our unassigned fund balances and our assigned fund balances are within our parameters. The unassigned fund balances are really the important piece, because those are the most flexible dollars that we have. If something comes up in the district that we have to fund at the last minute, that we have to plan up, those unassigned fund balance dollars are how we pay for it. The assigned fund balance have specific purposes, so like the categorical funding, they have very specific purposes that they can use for, and they're not as flexible. So if some catastrophe happened, we'd need to have unassigned dollars available, and that's what the unassigned fund balance would do. So what's next? We are working on finalizing those enrollment projections, because once we finalize those, then we can calculate our enrollment or our revenue. Again, revenue is a lot of it based on homeless enrollment. We need to determine what those equitable school allocations look like, we're prioritizing department requests, make sure that we're able to fund as much as we can, both report expenditures projections to our board, and have another town meeting with our community so that you're well informed of what our process is in, are, and as we finalize numbers, we'll share that out. We're going to finalize all the budget allocations, and then we'll have to continue to monitor that. There's multitude of things that go into revenue expense projections, so we need to make sure that we're flexible when things change. We're waiting on the governor and the legislature to do their work, and typically, what happens is the governor releases its budget recommendations, and they're kind of up here, the senate comes back, theirs is down here, House of Representatives is kind of in between, and then they have to agree on some compromise. So we all monitor what's going on in the Capitol, there are various legislative advocates that are advocating for school districts, and we want to make sure that we're supporting them so that we can get as much needed resources as we possibly can.
When you expect, what would the board be approved, if that would be approved?
The governor has stated that he does not want to go into special session, which means by the end of June, they have to have an approved budget. Again, it doesn't always fit with the timing of school district planning, because we don't have any control over that. So we just have to remain flexible, have Plan B, Plan C, Plan P, in case whatever happens, happens. We'll just keep, continue to monitor that.
I have a question. The inspector, he said he's going to bridge the gap, call fifty percent of what the gap is today. That's his proposal, that's his proposal, what are you going to, I know it could change, because you're not finalizing what your assumptions are, but what percent are you going to use in terms of higher of the special ed revenue?
I mean, I think we'll have that conversation, Dr. Thomas and I will kind of review what we plan. I tend to be a little more conservative. I have never seen them close that special education gap, I mean, I would love to see it, I don't think, given all the other demands on his budget, that it's going to get close to fifty percent. And I would love it if I'm wrong, but I don't think so.
Is fifty percent about three million dollars?
Roughly, yeah, and I would say that, you know, we've been talking about this cost subsidy conversation, like, seriously talking for a good ten years. To, you know, it's been longer than that, but I would say we're, we're, we have serious conversations, and nothing has moved. We are seeing a, hearing a different tune some this year, I'll say for myself, I'm hearing a different tune being sung at the state level, that I've never heard in my entire twenty-eight years or so in education, where we actually made some traction on some things. Will it be fifty percent? You know, I mean, I, I, I would be shocked if we came even close to that. Will it be some? Yeah, I think there's an appetite for it. I don't, I think the political will is there to do something, but again, folks, as, as everything in, in multiple industries, there's politics involved with all this, so for me to consent to, you know, if I'm a legislator and I have to consent to that cost subsidy, even though it's good for kids, that means I'm bailing out the federal government, who's not doing their job, and why should we at the state level have to bail out our feds? And so, you know, on political principle, I'm not going to do it. I mean, those are the real kind of conversations that are happening in the Capitol. And, you know, so again, we have to sometimes sit back and watch, we have been, both been down testifying in our careers, our professional agencies are there testifying, many of our senior leaders are down in the Capitol testifying as well. You know, regionally, we also know that we are stronger together, so a lot of the issues that we saw on that one slide sheet, we band together to try to have that one voice to really affect, you know, political change that influences our general regions. So there's so many factors that go into what ultimately comes to the books in these respective issues. So, you know, I think this is where our legislators really pay attention to our community, not that they don't, but this is the time for them to really tune in, and particularly parents. I can't say the amount of times that they've been down and, you know, professionals with all these years of experience can be talking, but you get a parent that their, that their student standing next to them, that pulls those heartstrings really quickly, and you see politicians walk up a window, and they have to care for kids coming in really quick. So this is where I encourage our communities to come forward, you know, and advocate in the name of the issue.
And again, as, as Dr. Thomas said, with tonight, we want to get input from our community. What are the things that you would like us to consider as we're building the budget? What, what priorities do you want us to have conversations about? And we would love